Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission's special meeting. So on March the 10th, 2022, and it is 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the people of which this stands. Under God, in thy name, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Tonight is a special hybrid public meeting at council chambers utilizing electronic equipment. This meeting may be accessed by the public either in person or electronically in real time as set forth here in law, pursuant to Connecticut law, Public Act 21-2. This is a Zoom meeting. This meeting will be recorded, made available on the town's website pursuant to state law. Written comments, written public comments in compliance with the guidelines for public participation or remote electronic meetings may be submitted up to the close of business days on the date, meeting via electronic mail, as noted in the agenda. I'm going to call the roll, starting on my right.
Dominic Margarito, alternate.
Dominic Panichio, alternate.
Brian Condon, Commission Secretary.
Bruno Mayne, Vice Chairman.
Robert Westland, Commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, alternate.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Derek Stroud, Recording Secretary.
Hey, thank you.
Do we have to seat somebody?
Um, not yet. The general public participation next, at this point, if there are any members of the public, either online or in person, that have any issues or comments that they'd like to make known to the Planning and Zoning Commission, that is not in regard to a matter before us tonight, or that may be before us in the near future. Please make yourselves known, and this will be the time for you to speak. Seeing none here, are there any people online, members of the public, that would like to comment or participate? If not, well, you're next, then we'll move along. Please note that the last member of the commission has arrived.
Late.
But the record show.
You're so late.
All right, so we're just getting started. Public hearing, first public hearing is SCP 2021-15, 395 Monroe Turnpike. This is a continuation from 21722, which was a continuation from 12022. Are there any new dibits?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we received revised architectural plans dated February 28th, 2022. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And we have someone from the applicant tonight?
Yes, good, yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Mr. Schultz, for the record, my name is Chris Smith, and I appear before you this evening on behalf of Seventh Realty LLC. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I believe that we do have everybody either on the Zoom from the team, on the Zoom, or in attendance this evening. And we did provide you with the most recent updated elevation that we believe incorporated the last couple of changes that we heard from the commission. And at the outset, I would like to thank you on behalf of the entire team, and certainly my client and the Steiners, for having this special meeting after the mix-up last week with the, with the scheduling, which does happen in these times with remote meetings. So thank you for that. We're here to respond to any questions that the commission may have relative to either the architectural updates, or any questions that you may have overall.
All right, thank you. Mr. Smith will poll the commissioners first, starting on my left.
Ooh, you're first.
No questions. I just want to thank you for taking our comments into consideration. The new layout looks nice, and I want to thank you for your understanding with having to reschedule from last week, but I don't have any questions.
I have no questions. No questions.
See, the only question I have is, you raised the elevation on the building? No.
No, it was just, I just was referring to the architectural changes that were made, the modifications with the elevation drawing. I can't tell if that's Mr. Chairman or not.
Commissioner Ambrose.
Commissioner Ambrose.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you didn't change any of the elevations on the building?
Uh, Michael, just for the record, Michael, is, that is the case, correct or Jason?
Just the elevation. Yeah.
Just what? I didn't hear that.
Sorry, it's Jason Edwards for the record. All, all he changed was the elevation views of the building. No, no actual elevations. What Chris is referring to is just the, the side views of the building are referred to as the elevation views.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
No questions. Thank you for the revisions, no questions.
No questions.
Okay. Do we have anything else from staff?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on SCP 2021, which is Dunkin' Donuts? Any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on SCP 2021? If not, then we'll go back to the applicant for comments, or would you, what would you like to do?
Just, just, just in closing, Mr. Chairman, we certainly appreciate the ability and opportunity to work with the commission on behalf of the team. I'd like to thank you for working with us with the various site design and development aspects with the application, and as well as with the architected, and respectfully submit that the application that's before you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, does comply with your site development plan regulations for the principal restaurant use, as well as your special exception criteria for the accessory drive-through use. And my client looks forward to hopefully opening soon and getting up in operation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. If there are no other comments or questions, then we'll close the hearing. Hearing is now closed. That's our only public hearing for tonight. We have no subdivision plans to review, so we can go right to deliberations. Deliberating on this application, so we have five seated members here. Do we have any discussion? No, sir, for me. So I think we have a draft?
Nope. I'm good. You have a draft, make some changes, they agreed to make.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I do have a draft, if you're ready for me to read it. Yes. Do we get copies? I just prepared this today. You want me to make copies in the?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll go do that right now.
Fifty-six minutes.
Get used to it, man. It doesn't stop.
Stupid. I'm on a total medic here. And you want socialized medicine. I don't want that. But listen to me. If I really calculated, I could have probably figured it out. They're supposed to do a billing cycle every three months, is what it is. You have to pay for me because Medicare billed every three months. For A and B, A and B is part both. So it's supposed to be 170 bucks. I get a bill for 680, I go, 170 bucks a month. Yeah. Sure enough. Looking for four months. He says, I don't know how that happened, Mr. Chairman, but you got billed for four months. Says, why, we catch up to it later. You? But I'm like, what the hell? Well, no, I have to pay every, that was not, pay every three months. Because I had four months. No, it goes every four months, you gotta pay, they send you a bill. It's like not monthly, they don't give you a month, two weeks. One bill quarterly.
But my son's. Not much has changed. My son's.
She's pretty good. So I says, what's this gonna cost? Rather just, oh, no. No, in Connecticut. You went for a Medicare advance. Yeah. Because I'm a prescription drugs, whatever it is, but it says for this plan. It's a good deal for me. My son's soccer coach. Dude, I would pay 1,200 a month. Insurance just, I'm sorry. I actually, I'm opposite, man, like, I miss it. Calculate that out.
I love the little ones. I do, too.
Yeah, it's 30. Here in insurance.
I didn't mind any of that. Didn't mind any of it. Kyle used to, Kyle used to, she'd be like, go get the baby, I changed the baby. Magical combination is Medicare, Medicaid. I'd put the baby back, I didn't mind that at all. Loved it.
And I was thinking about taking, the only thing I could, and was like, because they're not, six for a man. I was gonna take it. They weren't enjoyable for like the first six months, because they're so needy of their mind, just for eating, you know? So basically, all I did, so all I did was basically change the kid, change the kid, you know, and then hand him over to my, to my wife at the time, and she would feed, you know, so like, six months.
I got a kid, I don't even know.
I loved it. I loved dressing on the, you know, back. I could totally, let me give you the shot.
Car trouble, I mean, his car slowly falling apart while he drives it.
What's wrong with it?
Everything.
He's got a Cadillac, so the rims are like.
Cadillac.
I don't know, I don't know cars at all, Leon. Mine's red. Drive it, you. I know that much.
There you go. Can fix yourself?
Tell her. I actually considered that. The work is. Actually could have it drawn out of.
He's got a Wrangler, and he's got a Cadillac.
Yeah, tell him to. He's working hard. That's just, don't tell him. Don't tell him those things.
That's what I thought.
Spilled the beans right away. Like, oh, that's right. That happened a long time ago, I'm so old, I didn't. Before I got in that accident. Remember, you remember when I tripped and fell? I don't remember.
Found that much out, and like, him and a buddy were doing.
That's right. Yeah, don't be putting that in there. Fix the flats, great idea. Tell him, don't be doing that. He needs to put inside a tire. You know that? Fix the flats, it's no good for your tire sensors.
It's great for the tire.
Tire sensors, it eats away.
It's fine.
Keep putting them in your car.
Can you just let Rick read?
Rip the handle off. That's fine, it's not a big deal.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, the members have a draft copy, special exception permit approval, SCP 2021-15 filed 1640A as an apple. Whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission is considering an application for special exception approval for the following. Construction of a single-story, 2,107-square-foot restaurant building with drive-through and supported parking and loading. Rounds the property consist of 1.15 acres, is located on the west-ly side of Monroe Turnpike, within the commercial B1 district, B1. And whereas in the course of the review of the application, commission has noted the following. Application referred to the ARB, Town Engineer, Health Department, Conservation and Water Resources Commission, and Fire Marshal. Frontage and access is from Monroe Turnpike. Site is not located within 500 feet of municipal boundary. The site is located within the Farmville River public watershed area. Site is not subject to a conservation easement, and does not include areas of the 100-year flood plain. Site does not contain wetlands, watercourses, and the associated 100 or 150-foot upland review area. A favorable review by the Monroe Architectural Review Board was received. Site is served by public water and an onsite septic disposal system. Health Department in their letter dated February 17th approved the onsite septic system with conditions. The ARB recommended approval of the architectural plans with no conditions. The commission expressed concern with the pipeline for the app customers and how they would merge with regular customers. Commission requested additional landscaping along Monroe Turnpike to buffer the headlights from the customers. And the commission requested revising the Easter elevations and the roof of the building by enhancing the architectural appearance of this side of the building. Whereas the commission has considered the proposed application duly notice public hearing, open on January 20th and closed on March 10th, 2022. Notice of the public hearing was filed in the Monroe Town Clerk's Office and published in the Connecticut Post. Whereas the public hearing notice was set to a body property notice within 100 feet of the subject property, as evidenced by the submission of certified mail receipts and subsequently returned green cards. Now therefore be resolved, the commission in accordance with Section 8-22 of the zoning regulations provides the following with respect to the special exception. Actions consistent with the POCD, the location, nature, height, and the design of the proposed buildings are consistent with applicable B1 district standards. Proposed exterior lighting will be stark light, dark sky compliant. The site will be served by public water and a subsurface sanitary system, septic system. The drive-through lane was as designed and explained by the applicant should adequately serve the needs of the customers with proper line striping and signage. Compliant off-street parking, including ADA compliance spaces and loading facilities, are proposed. Be a further resolved, the commission in accordance with 8-1 and 7.1 of the zoning regulation, hereby fines, second, followed by deliberations on March 10th to approve the special exception permit, SCP 2021-16 filed 1640A as an apple. Subject to the following conditions. Adherence to the recommendations of the Town Engineer and his report dated February 17th, 2022, including bonding with the exception of traffic and safety recommendation C, which the commission unanimous consensus was unanimous to eliminate it, and the drainage and utilities recommendation number one, the same. And to record easement agreement for the shared parking on the west-ly side of the property line. Be a further resolved, the approval is specific solely to the details herein and the associated site development plans as required. Be a further resolved, the commission hereby authorizes the publishing and filing of a notice of decision consistent with Connecticut General Statute 8-3CB. Be a further resolved, set forth above the application shall be subject to the following conditions as explained below. So, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, you are ready for a motion and a second and a roll call vote. Oh, and Mr. Chairman, will you be voting? And if you are, to state for the record, because you were at, at the last meeting, that you're familiar with the application.
Are there any questions for Rick? If not, the chair will attend a motion.
I'll make a motion, approve SCP 2021-15, file number 1640A, 395 Monroe Turnpike, as drafted.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second, Van Brose.
I have motion and a second. All right, is there any discussion? If not, then we'll call the roll to approve this as drafted, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
O'Reilly, yes. Mayne, yes.
Westland, yes.
Okay. SCP is approved.
Thank you very much, stay well.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Moving along. It's pending meeting minutes, February 3rd.
I didn't think we were voting on.
Yeah. Hey, you want a table, those? To next meeting.
Next, we're calling up to zoning planning matters. We have two planning and zoning matters. First is the update on the LEP construction for 65 Cambridge Drive, 4 Independence Drive. We've gotten several iterations of the proposal. It's gone through the town, and it's gone through staff. The latest one is before you tonight. So we're going to talk about this, and then the plan is to move this along, I believe, to town.
This has to go for authorization by the town council. So if you are comfortable tonight, and I'm going to give a, an overview where we are up to date, we have Mr. McCarthy here, he's on the screen, and he's going to detail all three tasks, but specifically P and Z is task two and three. Now, having said that, the inland wetlands met last night. Their condition of approval is similar to P and Z in terms of the length of time, 12 months. Now, for the, if this project is to start April, that will leave nine months before the water has to be shut off for the, for the rehydration of the wetlands. And it's winter months, so there won't be any activity. So that's issue number one. Rob McCarthy will state that he went to the site with staff, the owner, and the owner's representatives. And Rob will go into detail with that. At the inland wetlands meeting, which they, the consensus was to move forward and to advise this commission that they're satisfied with task one, with some minor edifications, and Mr. McCarthy will go over that. One of which is to notify the inland wetlands commission when the LEP, which is Rob, visits the site, enabling any commissioner to go and meet. And we would like to do the same for this body.
So.
Hold on, this whole, the, the LEP's only there for one year?
The condition of approval is for.
What if the project takes 10 years?
No, it is. And I'm, I was just ready to get to that part.
Okay.
Before the November shutdown, you will probably see a major transformation of the site. But you'll see it before. They are initially going to push all of the stockpile material into the, into the pit while they are sorting out the Stratford School. They want to get that moved in right away. That will free up space for the staging of the filling that comes in, and for the inspections that are necessary. So before November comes, you are going to have a, a, a big discussion with staff, the consultant, and the applicant, where they are, how things are going. Keeping in mind, if anything happens along the way that's inconsistent with the conditions of approval, we stop the job and revisit what happened and to rectify it. So this contract will be for the first nine months, they're obligated for 12 months, which is, which is three more months. That would start in April of 2022. Also, when you discuss this pre, prior to November, you will determine how things are going, and at that time, you can say that it either makes sense to go beyond the 12 months, let's say like to 15 months, because there were some irregularities or something, you know? But we have to work that arrangement out with the applicant, as well as the inland wetlands commission.
Well, I believe our concern was about the material coming in, too.
Oh, it is.
Okay, so they're going to shut down in three months and not bring any material in?
Oh, absolutely. For the winter months, we.
No, 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 they're going to bring in what they consider clean fill. That's why we have an LP, to take a look at the documents that they're bringing in, to make sure it's clean fill before it goes into the ground.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, but you're saying that they're going to shut down in November. Are they going to shut down bringing in fill in November?
Oh, absolutely, in terms of backfilling it, because the weather doesn't allow that to occur with, with the storm events that we have.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there's oversight in the middle of the winter.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. That part.
This is, this is, we have, we gave them, we gave them approval for two years, right?
Yeah, right.
On, on a condition, say we're going to have an LP oversee this project, right?
Oh, absolutely.
So this is only a one-year contract?
The, as I told the commission before, the way that it works in Monroe per charter is to avoid bidding, you can do a 12-month period, and then renew it in the following year. My, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you wanted inspections for 24 months, then that's something that we need to discuss right now.
Well, that's what I think that all this commission, I don't know, I was, and I think Rob and, and, and Bruno were on the same thing, that because we're going to keep it within the parameters, because they're going to come back to us for another fill permit, because it only lasts for two years.
That's correct.
Right, so the LP would have to be representative for two years. But this is a one-year contract, correct?
Right.
So we have the option to renew it after the one year, if you feel like.
You will know in December, November, how things are going. You have an opportunity, like inland wetlands, and they stated last night, if you want to revise your condition of approval, you have the ability to do so. If not, we're going to do a second contract for the 2020 year.
But I'm saying to you, it would have to be in the condition of approval for two-year professional.
Mr. McCarthy's going to include that. We're going to discuss that right now. We're going to talk about the inland, the planning and zoning commissioners going to the site when the LEP is there.
No, I have that.
Rick, I think what you're saying is, we're going two years, but we're going one year at a time.
Right. But you'll also have the opportunity to revisit that condition of approval if you don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, he's.
And that's what Wetlands said last night. But right now, it's 24 months.
But the other question that I'm just running around is, after November, are they going to continue bringing clean fill in until throughout the winter?
That's what we're going to discuss right now.
Okay, because that's important, you know?
When it's inclement weather, you don't want to get involved in a situation like that. That's, that's when it could be problematic.
No, it's like what they said here when they came here, is that as they get it, they want to bring it in. And when they get the clean fill, they want to bring it in. So if there's somebody that's got clean fill, or they got what they consider clean fill, which is why we want the LP to be there, because I want to make sure it's clean fill and it meets the state's definition of clean fill, that's why the LP has to inspect what comes in there and inspect the doc.
I'm suggesting to you, it doesn't make sense during inclement weather to have fill coming in.
I understand that. That from happening. As this commission prevents that from happening, they can bring it in anytime they want. It's not going to be a part of the condition of approval, and they're not going to agree to that. I don't believe that they would agree to that, because that's not what we discussed. What we discussed was that we were going to, because they wanted to do that, and we all said that, they all said, that we would have LP on hand. And LP during that period of the two years, look at all the documentation that came in, look at the fill that came in, and make sure, because it's a GAA watersite, make sure we're bringing in clean fill. And what you're saying is, he's going to close down in November, and I'm sure that when, if they get an opportunity to bring clean fill in, they're going to bring it in whenever they can. And then we're not going to have anybody there to oversee that.
We have to monitor it, so.
Unless you modify the whole deal.
Who's going to monitor?
No, that's what we're going to discuss right now.
Okay, do you have anything else on that?
No, I just wanted to give an overview of what happened at Wetlands. Where we're at, and Rob is going to take it from here.
Ask McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, you're online?
Yes, I am. Hello.
Okay, well, this looks like a nice proposal, and I like it, too, but how about that?
So to answer, to answer that question, and the, part of the discussion last night with inland wetlands was about, you know, making sure that we made it until November, because that's when they may stop what is needed for task one. But certainly, you know, we can, we're going to kind of, we're going to have regular check-ins, where it's every, you know, we'll be touching base every month, and have, you know, every few months, we'll take a look at where we're at as far as the frequency of inspections, level of effort that we're at. And we can make it to the end of this calendar year, you know, with this, with the, with the first proposal. And then, you know, as it gets later in the year, we can look forward to what is going to be needed next year, and be able to have a new proposal to meet the needs at that time for next year. And, you know, we're certainly going to, you know, work with you to, to make sure there's coverage for the whole time.
You can continue this until December 31st, then.
Yes, we can do that.
The only thing is, though, is we're going to have a short window of when he stops to when we're going to have to figure out whether we like what's happening between November and December, and is it going to leave us enough time to decide what we're going to do in January, February?
We could start the discussions earlier.
You have to.
It won't be stopped until November. So we're not going to get any kind of.
Yeah, but you could still, you can still, you can still operate in December, you can still.
I think it's specifically task one, which is about the water, which they can't do in December.
Right, but then we just heard that it's going to winter, and then start next April. So what happened?
So I did get to go out, if I can, for one second. I did get to go out to the site and met with, you know, the owner and their team, and got a much better understanding.
You have to, it's going to
Won't be stopped until November. So we're not going to get any kind of
Yeah, but you could still, you can still, you can still operate in December. You can still
I think it's specifically task one, which is about the water, which they can't do in December.
But then we just heard that it's two, the winter and then start next April. So what happened?
So I did get to go out, if I can for one second. I did get to go out to the site and met with, you know, the owner and their team and got a much better understanding of the sequence of events that's going to occur out there. And so ignoring task one for right now, um, you know, task two is to, to backfill the area with the material that's all currently on site, all of the natural material that's currently on site. And then after two or three months, when they have completed that, they're going to do the material sorting of the Stratford School material that's there. And they're estimating that that's going to take two to three months also and be able to use that material. And so that, you know, was where we kind of got to this six-month timeframe. And then after that is when they will be, if they're finding clean fill from offsite, they'll be starting to receive it at that time and be able to use that material. And so, yes, we will be involved, you know, each of those stages and be able to keep an eye on what's going on. And if they're starting to bring in clean fill, you know, we'll be monitoring that as well. And, you know, and, and making sure that they're following their own protocols and, you know, the material is what, what they say it is.
So Rick, at what point do we start to think about a second year?
Oh, in, in October. I'm just apprehensive. I don't like major filling projects happening in the dead of the winter.
No, I understand. I understand all that, but I'm saying to you is that, I'm not saying about filling it or
We have a million in the middle. Receiving it.
They're going to receive material in the winter, right? And I, I was on the assumption that this is a, a two-year deal.
It is.
No, but I'm saying it would have to be a two-year
This is not a two-year deal.
This is not a two-year
The project is a
Project is a two-year deal. So the project, we would have to have an LP in place for two years at each time.
And we need to incorporate that as a reminder.
A reminder as a condition.
Well, as a condition because it's going to be a town council.
Yeah, but it can't
Round two. There's going to be a round two.
Oh, there's going to be one contract this year and then another contract next year. That's an administrative decision. That's not our decision here. Okay? One contract this year, if we want to continue it, we can discuss it in November, December, I mean, October.
October.
It's going, then October. And if we want another contract for another year, we then say for with another LP, then we can, LEP, then we can do that.
We, it can't be conditioned because the approval's already been signed. So these are not
Any conditions in the approval.
Right.
Two years of this, yes.
Correct. But we can't make conditions at this point because
We're not.
Rick just said conditions. What do you mean we're not?
It already is a condition. It was a condition of the approval. And Wetlands.
We cannot make any more conditions whatsoever.
Right, making a reference in this document that there's a year or two.
All right, not in the, not in the approval in here.
Yes. You gotta remind the town council there's a year or two.
Okay, right. And then we'll decide at the end of this year whether we want another year, which we probably will. But we can change the scope at that point if we think we need more or less.
If they're done with the water, task one can be removed. If they're, you know, different things.
Another issue I have is this all, this all in time, this all relates back to inland wetlands.
Yes.
Right, and so they're the ones that's hiring the LP.
And we're piggybacking on it because they, they, so
Right.
Task one is them.
They, they have to approve this in inland wetlands of what we approve. I would imagine that's the way it is because they haven't voted on this yet, have they?
Their consensus was to report favorably to this commission.
On their end.
Satisfied with task one.
They're satisfied with tasking and then they wanted us and they want us to take care of tasks.
Two and three. Three is the big one.
And that's planning and zoning.
That is correct.
So this document, when they have to vote on it, this all has to be written in here for task one and task three.
Correct.
And we have to put in that we want a two-year period.
Right. Conversely, is one year and they want to have an opportunity to review that again in November.
I got that, but we were under consideration that we're, because they're, they're thinking about that he's going to shut down. I watched the meeting last night that he's going to close down in November. Because they're, what do you call it? And then we have our own tasks we have to have to. So I think that we can't really have him just shut down in November. Because if there's material coming
Better put on a different
Know what's coming in there and we need to have him look at the documents to make sure it's clean fill and to make sure it meets the definition of clean fill.
But you're hearing from Rob, he can take it to, his inspections for task two and three can go up to the end of the year.
Yeah, it was specifically task one, which is water pumping, which can't be done.
I know, but we can't, we also can't say that there, there's, you don't want a film process going on in the middle of the winter when you had one on 25 going on.
No, we're not, we're not saying that.
Again.
Rick said it. We're not.
Again. It was said.
Great, but we're the board, we're the ones that get to make the decision. Rick can give us his opinions, but
I, I have a question.
All the where they're going to bring in film in the middle of the winter.
Mr. McCarthy, pertaining to task one, you know, it says here that you'll visit the, the site on a regular basis to observe the pumping. What type of frequency can, can we expect?
So we, for the pumping part, and we did put in there that it'll probably be every two weeks. That we'll have someone there and we're going to piggyback that on, you know, the inspections that are for the, the part that is, you know, the backfilling in the portion for P and Z so that, you know, if we're out there to, to inspect things that are going on for backfilling, we'll be, also be able to look at the pumping at the same time. So, you know, at least every two weeks is what we'll be doing.
And can, can you just give us a brief description of the scope of work, what we actually be doing during those visits?
To get for task one?
Yeah.
Generally confirming, you know, that the water's flowing, taking a walk up the, you know, the, the hose line that's going to be going up into the woods where the, the wetland restoration is going to occur. And they've got pieces off of it that are soaker pipes or soaker hoses. You know, and just making sure that that's working properly and, and hopefully that it's, you know, achieving what it's meant to achieve and that it's going to rehydrate the, the soils up there to restore the wetland.
What, any type of testing of the water?
We did, we did figure in, yes, that we'll do one test of the water at the beginning. You know, just for volatile organics and metals. Is what we assumed in here for now, but we can do other things if needed. Yes, that we can have our own verification, you know, of, of the water condition. Beyond that, you know, maybe based on other data that, that we're seeing or obtained from, you know, from the owners or what we see out there.
Yeah, testing the water quality, as far as I'm concerned, is the most important, you know, a visible check on the fact that it's pumping is great, but we just got to make sure that what's happening is, is, is healthy for the, the ground over there. Safe.
Right, right, but if you're checking it every two weeks, well, he's not.
We're not going to be sampling it every two weeks. We'll, we'll just be visually observing what's going on every two weeks.
So how many samples of water are you going to take a year?
For the proposal, we had figured in one.
One?
You know, if that's, because if that's pumping from a bedrock well and, you know, if you
No, I'm talking about, they have wells on site, don't they? They have a couple wells.
Those other, right, other monitoring wells. We did not
Other mines, well, are you, are you testing those wells?
We did not figure in testing those wells, no.
They are testing it and they're going to provide the information to Rob.
Testing it.
The owner's team. Remember, this is a joint effort. The owner's team is continually testing and they're going to provide the results to
You're going to test those wells that
Absolutely.
Monitor well, and then, and then how often are they going to test them?
I, I don't know the period on that one, they don't get that.
Like, I, I What we're concerned about is, is this is a GAA water site. And we want to get a handle if for some reason the wells test bad and it shows contamination in the wells, we need to address this in a different way. So, I mean, I think most of these commissioners were concerned about that because it's a GAA water site. And so that's what, what our task is here in, in the task of the material coming in and a task of the material that's in the ground to make sure that it, there's no environmental concerns with what's already in the ground. And if there is, we need to report on that. I don't know, was that relayed to you at all or any of that stuff?
So Rick, you know how often they will be testing the other wells?
No, I don't, but Rob and staff met with the whole team there. And they conveyed that we will provide the information to the LEP that is needed. So let's put that in task two and three. Add one, add water monitoring results provided by the applicant to the town's LEP.
And how often that will be done?
Rob, what do you think is
What's the best frequency?
What's the best for monthly?
Monthly is very frequent and quarterly would be generally sufficient, but it, you know, it depends on exactly what the monitoring well network looks like, how many wells there are and, you know, where they are in relation to, to the concerns, but you know, quarterly would be sufficient.
We'll just put in at least quarterly. Okay, water monitoring results at least quarterly. From the applicant and then once from the
And also, as I reported, Wetland members want an opportunity to meet with Rob monthly. Is that something this commissioner wants to do? No, quarterly.
So I have a question regarding that. They wanted it, they want to be notified every time he goes out to the site?
Monthly, yes.
So how many?
So they can, so they can, I can, so staff can make arrangements with the owner that commissioners will be attending the site.
So my concern is then how is any of it a surprise check? If
It's pretty hard.
All the boards are being told and they're calling the owner and saying, hey, everyone's coming. I mean
We have to coordinate it, Ryan, that way.
I don't like that idea. I think that there should be some spot checks.
If I may, so we have, we have figured in other visits that may not be by the LEP. They'll be by a, a staff member from NSafe. And those are the visits that can be essentially unannounced and, and not be on a, on a set frequency.
Thank you. That makes me feel better.
So how often will you give us a report?
We had figured in monthly at least, you know, what our summary of what's going on out there. Inland Wetlands had indicated last night that they had only required every three months to have a report in their approval, but if your approval is different, you know, we can, we can do monthly.
Okay, and then if something is, if you find some contamination or whatever material that's in there, how will that be addressed?
We will, you know, make immediate notifications to the town. And, you know, and also to the owner, you know, as to what we have found. And, you know, and figure out between the town, staff and the owner what the appropriate steps are to take regarding that.
I don't know, do you have a question about, I forgot already.
What was your question?
Oh, what are they? Go ahead.
Uh, no, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't, I, I think this is an absolute waste. That's just me.
Which prod?
It, the, the problem is they're definitely going to bring in material. Even in the winter time, there's no, there's no doubt about it. And I don't blame them, right? Something, something could happen.
So we need to, yeah, so then we need to have this written up. He needs to, and I don't want to put it in a task that he has to do and I understand what he's doing or what he was advised to do. But like I said before, I understand where you're coming up with a $50,000 deal in order to get it approved and we don't have to bid it out and all kinds of stuff like that. I got all that. But we have to ensure that this site is going to be okay.
Monitor.
Now, a monitor, right. And now, Commissioner, Bruno has, Bruno has concerns. I'm sure everybody else has concerns. That we want to make sure that this is done black and white, that we are covered all year long. I thought it was for two years. Now it's going to seem like a year and we're going to revisit it in another year and then we may change it.
Just to, to turn it, if you want to make any changes.
I understand that, but this was a two-year process.
Two-year permit.
It was a two-year permit and this, this would have to re, like I said, in the approval. This would have had it been in the approval that this is going to happen for two years. I don't believe it ever was in there and I don't believe it ever was put in there. But I don't know why it wasn't put in there. I mean, we're piggybacking on, on Wetlands, but on the other hand, that's the way it was supposed to be done.
It's a two-year permit.
That's what they all agreed on this commission that we were going to do.
It's a two-year permit. Absolutely right.
One-year contract at a time. That's an administrative
Because when a year's up, half of this contract's not going to be relevant anymore. The backfilling and grade restoration might be done.
But like, but for a perfect example, what happened here tonight? He said that he's going to probably shut down in November, basically was what was going, that's because of what for task one. But basically is that they're saying that no activity is going to be after that. That's not true. There is going to be more activity after that because they're going to bring in fill. And somebody needs to monitor what fill they're bringing in. This is, just remember, this has to be approved by Wetlands, not us, by Wetlands.
And us.
No.
Not task one?
No.
Not task one?
Not task one.
Which task one is not going to go in the winter, task two and task three, which is what's going to go in the winter. He's here now and we're telling him he's going to be there during
Am I wrong or not? Who has to make a decision on this? Who has to vote on this?
In the Wetlands, task one, P and Z, task two.
But we're incorporating on their LP, they're hiring the LP in inland wetlands. So our task has to be all written out here for inland wetland.
That's where we're going over the changes.
Make sure it's all written in there that it's a yearly thing or it's two-year process for us. Right, so that's what I'm saying to you.
Ultimately, he's got to see it and be comfortable with.
It's not us making the change. We can make changes in here. But they're the ones that are going to vote on these changes that we make in inland wetlands.
And they've given us a favorable, favorable referral of task one because that's what concerns them.
They made some changes here that are not in here.
I'm sure whatever we say, they're not going to change.
There's changes on her that's not in this.
Yeah, they're pretty subtle, but I, I went over a few of
Right, but I mean, they're not on this task.
That's correct. Rob didn't have a chance to finish.
They're not looking to change two and three. They're letting us determine that.
Oh, that's your
We're going to give them a favorable referral and they will approve it. If they have any changes to our changes, it'll come back to us. And we're going to have to go back and forth. It's a unique thing we're doing here.
I have a question. Why are we letting inland Wetlands supersede what
No, 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 wrong word.
They're not.
Task one.
Task one is theirs. It's not ours.
Yeah.
You see
They're taking that. They're moving water. That's not What happened, what happened in this commit, what happened here in this commission and what I want to do is I want it to have our own LP.
But that didn't happen.
I understand that. I got all that. I don't want to be a household application. I'm just trying to tell you where we're at now. Because we can't change, the LP is hired by inland wetlands. It's not hired by planning and zoning commission. We can only give, we can only give them suggestions of what we want in this for them to hire the LP.
Yeah, your activity.
Anything to do with planning and zoning now, we only put these tasks in here so that they can approve what tasks we want.
That's what we're doing now, yes.
And this doesn't cover everything that we all wanted.
We're coming up with it right now.
It's coming up with one year and we're supposed to have two years because that's what our approval is for the fill.
One and two-year is gone. We're not talking about that anymore.
We gave them a fill permit for two years, by the way.
Correct, but we're doing one year at a time as far as the, as far as the pain for the, for us, one year at a time.
I have that, but we have to have
Stop talking about two years then.
It has to be in the task then, doesn't it?
Yes, and he's going to add that.
We're going to, we have to include that. We got to make sure the town council is aware
In a year, this
Wetlands is one year.
Yes.
And zoning is two years.
So we're adding that in. So we're adding whatever you
Wetlands would have to do it. With us, this is all a joint, no, Wetlands doesn't because Wetlands approval was only for a year. Wetlands could come back in a year and say, you know what, this isn't working, the restoration's not working. They could shut down the whole thing.
So we don't agree But two and one year or before one?
The nature of this, we have to work together, will we?
Two, that's right. Decide at that point if we want another contract for the second year and what we want in that.
Well, I thought that, I thought that what we were bringing fill, we're going to inspect the fill that comes in.
Yes.
The LP was four. So that would be for two years because it'd have to come back in for another permit.
But it could be a different LP doing it in a year, basically.
I have all that. But is there a contract for LP is only for one year?
Is their pro, their, their approval is only for a year? Their Wetlands approval is only for a year.
How long is Wetlands approval?
How long was the Wetlands
Approval for this process, restoration approval?
No, it's, it's for one year and the, and the, the period for the LEP one year.
Yeah, but the actual approval, so in a year, Wetlands needs to rehear this entire thing.
Have to extend it.
They can do extensions if they want, but yeah, so it's only
They want to get it right.
Probably they're only
So Wetlands only approved it for one year, Rick?
With the activities, with the specific activities. Visit it in November and grant an extension. They have the ability.
I thought they were only going
Yours, yours is stated in your regs, as you know, two
I got all that, but there's, I didn't think there was one year.
They can do up to five years.
That's what I thought it was.
In increments.
No, but I thought that they were just going to revisit it to see if it was working, but I thought they gave an approval for more than one year.
No, it's, it's one year.
It is stated in the last It is stated at last night. He did?
All right, can we move on? Bruno, uh, back, now you wanted to be sure that if they were bringing fill in after November, that it would be checked, correct?
Correct.
Rob?
Absolutely.
McCarthy said, yes, it will be.
Not you.
Yes, Rob McCarthy, right? Bruno? He said, yes, he will go through the full calendar year checking any fill that's brought in.
How's he gonna know if he's shutting down in November?
Rob, I cannot shut down.
We're gonna stop those task one portion in November.
Maybe it's gonna stop.
Okay.
The rest of it, go ahead. Mr. McCarthy said the same thing.
Yes. Yes, we're just gonna finish the task one portion in November when the well stops pumping, exactly. But if, you know, they're still bringing fill material in, we'll continue through December. And prior to, you know, you know, if it's October, November, when we're seeing what's gonna be happening and projecting into next year. You know, we'll be working out that next proposal and what the frequencies are gonna be for 2023. You know, so that we'll be able to stay through December on this current proposal and then have a new proposal for 2023 and be able to, to, you know, start right on that with the new year if they're still working out at the site.
So my question to you is they, they finished pumping in November, the water's all gone. Uh, Stratford High School's wherever it's gotta be, it's moved, it's whatever. And they start bringing fill. They, they can fill in January and February. They can, they can.
Next year?
Yeah, 2023.
We'll have a new contract in place by then to cover next year.
So it's not a.
It's a one-year contract.
And the one year started when?
Fiscal year probably, right?
The one year starts when?
Uh, when, when the town council approves it.
So it's one year from that point?
Well, it, it, yeah, it can be, but we're, we're saying the calendar year. It's cleaner when it's a calendar year for a contract.
But to, up to December 31st.
That's why we gotta revisit it in October, November.
So it's not a one year, it's like a nine month.
Yeah.
That's all that's left because we, we're starting it now.
It's gonna be like eight. Cause by the time we, yeah.
Concerns about fill?
I just got a friend about everything. It's fine. I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be here all night. Go ahead. I got another one question. We have one more question, Mike. Let's have a, Rob, do you think that the amount of water that is in that hole, that how long is it gonna take them to pump that water out of there?
Um, they, they told us when we were out at the site that they felt they could have it pumped out by the first of April or early April. On, you know, everything we, I was out there, it was the first of March or maybe it was February 28th and everything was completely frozen, so I can't can't say for sure what pumping rate they're gonna be at or anything like that, cause you know, nothing was happening at that time, so.
April of what year?
Of that, they were gonna have all the water out of that hole by April of this year.
So they've started pumping already? It's, it's, how many gallons?
He said he was out there and it's frozen. It was, they weren't pumping.
How many gallons of water do you think is there?
I don't know. I could estimate it.
So for task one then, they're saying that it's done. They're saying that their task one is gonna be done by April 1st, which is in like.
No, task one is different water pumping.
Just two different pumping going.
The task one, the task one of what they're pumping in wetlands, cause I watched inland wetlands, they're pumping out of a well that's an in-ground well. They're not allowing them to pump the water that's in the hole into the wetlands.
It's going to a detention.
Does, it's, it's going to detention basin that has to drift off, that got, that ends up going to the Paquonic River. And so I don't think that they can pump that kind of volume from the state. I don't think the state's gonna let them pump that kind of volume.
Too soon.
No way.
The weather conditions we got.
They're not even the weather conditions. There's like probably, I don't know how many gallons of water is in that, that hole, but there's a lot of water in that hole.
Okay, Nicole, you had a question?
That, that was it for now.
This is an unknown for a lot of us, cause it's so unique.
I'm just gonna suggest, can we go into task two and start looking at what it is we are asking them to do?
Yes, two and.
Good idea.
Okay.
Don't worry, it's been in that freaking hole for years. It's fine. Pop it in the wetlands. Wow, they can have that thing pumped down three weeks. That's a, it's a serious problem. All right, where we at?
Task two, we're just reviewing what it is.
This is a new version. We're allowing everyone to go over it and read it now.
Do you have to add more stuff into this?
Well, if you have a specific thing to add, bring it up.
That's why we're here.
That's why we're here.
Mr. McCarthy, can I ask, uh, for the junior staff, what level of scientist, is that the L E P? Is that, I know, see, we have the table. But a scientist, engineer, supervisor, what level professional is the, does the junior fall under?
Um, so I'm just, based on our staff that's in our Connecticut office, I've got one geologist who's got about 10 years' experience and she would be one of the most likely people to be out there. Um, also got another engineer with about 10 years' experience. Um, neither of them are L E Ps, but they've got plenty of experience to, you know, be out at a site like that and, um, see what's going on and understand what they're looking at, so.
And so how often will the actual L E P be out there? I see periodic visits about one a month. And are those announced or are those, those, those surprise visits we were asking about?
To, for the L E P, um, the discussion that kinda came out of last night was that those would likely be announced because that would be when, you know, the offer would be out there that anybody on the commissions could go at the same time. Um, you know, they certainly could be handled differently if, if you felt that way, but um, the other visits by, you know, other staff could be unannounced and they can be, you know, whatever frequency that, or every, you know, whatever they need to be out there and not have to, you know, let everybody know ahead of time.
The unannounced visits would be probably, most likely, the geologist and the engineer you referenced?
Yes.
Okay.
So since everything's billed hourly, does the hourly start when they leave the office or does the hourly start when they get to the site?
Uh, we typically do it when they leave the office. Um, so we.
How far is the office, how far is the office from the site?
Yeah, we're about an hour away. Cause it's, we're in Weathersfield.
So, and then how much time do they spend on site?
Um, we figured that, you know, they would do about a half a day on site, so about four hours on site, you know, which would be plenty of time depending on what's going on, you know, to, to keep, especially if they're showing up on a regular basis to, you know, see what changes are occurring more so than, you know, the specific work that's happening on any given day.
So who? Who will, who will review the documents?
Um, that would be a mix, whether it's between myself as the L E P or your junior staff as well, depending on what they are and what, you know, the, the volume of the documents too. Um, you know, if it's not very much, then I'll probably be the one just taking a look at it to see what, what's coming in.
Okay, and then when you review the documents, how do you go about that?
Um, yeah, it depends what it is, but you know, certainly if it's laboratory reports or summaries of, you know, if it's summaries of lab data, we'll check, you know, what has been summarized versus, you know, actual lab reports to make sure that, you know, the data that's being reported from the laboratory is what's being presented in summaries. Um, you know, if it's volumes of material or information on the material that's being hauled into the site, you know, we'll look at all those, all, all that detail and data to make sure that it's matching up with what we're seeing out at the site.
Is there any testing of the material? No, right? You don't have that in here.
We, we're not planning to do any testing.
Well, you receive the testing from the applicant's team, correct? They supply you with that? Cause I believe they, they were gonna be testing everything before it came in or when it left and once it came in.
Will you plan on testing any of the material that comes out of the ground from Stratford High School, whatever else is in there that we don't know exactly what's in there? Will you plan on doing any of the testing?
We did not estimate any testing of that.
Anybody testing that when it comes out of the ground?
Uh, the applicant's gonna be monitoring that and writing up a narrative on it.
They're gonna be testing it?
And including, including a narrative, yes. They have to.
Is he gonna?
They did already test it. To an extent.
Well, Leon is saying if anything else comes out.
They had done borings into those piles and they had tested them. We saw that material.
Leon's saying if something comes out that is.
Something new, yeah.
Something new. It'll be tested.
It's physically impossible to test every molecule of, I'm gonna say, material. They do the boring holes and they get.
Okay, Rob, how, how, how are you feeling about this?
I definitely think for the first year, I'd like to see a report. You know, as opposed to quarterly. Right.
He said monthly.
Well.
Just the water, the water.
The water testing.
Monitoring will be quarterly. That's what, you know, wetlands asked for, but he will report to us monthly.
That's not in here, is it?
It's going in there. It's one of my.
That's going in.
Writing this right now. What else, Rob?
Right, I mean, the rest of it is, you know, seems seems good. I'm still a little unclear on, on exactly how we're getting rid of the water that's in the hole now. Can, can we elaborate on that a little bit? I just don't know. That's a lot of water.
Rick, I believe it's gone to a detention.
Yeah, detention, the, Rob, remember the detention basin in the southeastern quarter?
Yeah, yeah, it's going to a detention basin and then from that detention basin, it is gonna run off the site from there, you know, through a controlled means. Um, you know, if I had to guess, I'd say that they're gonna be pumping at a rate of a couple thousand gallons a minute, which sounds like a lot, but when that gets converted to cubic feet per second, which is how drainage calculations are usually done, it's actually not that substantial of a flow rate. And it's, it's, it's a fair amount, but it's not, you know, a tremendous amount like a, like you get runoff from a large site.
Oh, it's, it's, okay. It's gonna be piped into the Paquonic River at the end of the day. That's pretty much the long and the short of it.
That's my understanding. From the detention basin, it will end up running to the, to the Paquonic River, yes.
Okay, how much volume, I, I mean, I, how much volume can you pump from a construction site? Does the state allow you to pump a day? Is there a volume amount that you can pump? Don't you have to get like a stormwater permit?
They have those permits.
Right, but I, I think it's only a certain amount you can pump a day, right?
I, I, I know there is a cap on that.
There is a cap. Does anybody know what that cap is?
I don't know that.
I'm just saying, I don't think they're gonna pump it all out within one month.
No.
And I wanna just, I mean, to be clear, whatever's in that hole right now is also making its way into the Paquonic River. It's not magically not going through the groundwater, so.
I wanna ask.
It's giving groundwater, yeah.
The water that's being pumped, the water is being pumped, it's going into a retention system. Their retention system only allows so much water.
Into a detention. I just wanna know how it's getting.
You could only pump as much as that retention system will take.
No, I understand that. They're saying they're gonna pump that big hole out in one month. I don't think that can happen. There's no way. That's what they just, that's what they.
Thousand gallons a minute.
Yeah.
Maybe they're removing it in chunks of ice.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Whatever they're doing.
The Eskimos?
They are blossoms.
Southern Connecticut ice and oil blossom? That's all I have. I just wanna understand how they're, how that's getting moved. I'm not saying it's wrong. I just kinda wanna understand how we're, we're actually dealing with that. And, uh, you know, I was concerned, uh, that the land, the land up top that we're trying to rehydrate, you know, we're gonna keep an eye on that to make sure we're not overdoing it and it's not, you know, it's actually absorbing the way it's supposed to.
But that's, that's an estimate because as they're pumping that water, am I right? As they're pumping that water, more rainwater and groundwater is gonna go into there and it's gonna replenish it. So it might take a lot longer than that.
Right, could be a dry month, could be all rain.
Okay. Um, Nicole?
For task two, I, I think my questions are answered. So just, I know it's been said 400 times, but so it's gonna be pumped out in March, by March, and they're expecting to start backfilling in this April of 2022.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's good.
Okay.
It happens.
I don't have any other questions, I promise.
Yeah, whether they stick to that schedule or not, he's still going to be giving oversight there and watching. Whether it takes them an extra two months to pump out that water or not.
Okay, Commissioner Smiglino, do you have any questions?
We went to visit the site, um, earlier last week, um, not, the, the whole thing's not full of water, like the back part.
Yeah.
I'm thinking maybe they're talking about pumping that and they can start filling in sides. Other side, yeah. So they could probably do that at the same time. Maybe that's what they meant.
Any other questions, Dominic?
I have no question other than we, we're relying on the engineer and the consultant to make sure that all these things are kept up.
Yeah.
And I don't want the inland wetland to supersede us. We, we should be acting as our own.
Well, we are, our staff is gonna be keeping an eye on things as well.
And remember, the project engineer, solely engineering is providing monthly reports, the engineering component.
Ryan, anything you'd like to add?
I don't know, take a step back, but, uh, Mr. McCarthy, just, uh, real quick, any, so you said you were gonna test the water before the project began and then monitor their water testing throughout the project?
Yes.
Is there any, I mean, is it practical for you to add a second test, uh, that you guys do at the end of the year?
Uh, we could, um, you know, the, the actual analysis isn't that much, so we certainly could do it at the end of the year to make sure it's still the same as what it was at the beginning.
That would be, I, I would like that. I don't, I won't speak for everybody else, but thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Ambrose, anything else you'd like added?
So we're gonna put the monitoring of the wells in this, right?
Yep.
And how many times is that gonna be?
Come again?
How often are we gonna do that? How often are we gonna ground, monitor wells? We.
What's a good timeframe for that?
So meaning the monitoring wells that are actually, that.
That are on the site.
This site, well, there's wells that are throughout the site and really that's, the owner's consultant will be testing those.
And you'll be seeing the results though.
Right, we'll be seeing those. And so, you know, if they're doing it quarterly, we'll, you know, look at their results when they're available after, after they've sampled.
You know how often that will be, Rick? How often the applicant will monitor the wells and report up to us?
Uh, I mean, it's either monthly or quarterly.
Okay. Well, can you, yeah, let us know?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, any other questions or things you'd like?
I'd like to ask one question. You're good.
You're next.
That's probably what you're thinking. The, the, the testing that the applicant is conducting on his own, how reliable is that test? You know, I'm just gonna throw it out there. If it was my project or a project that I needed to get going, I mean, what, how, how can we have any uh, degree of confidence that this test is being conducted correctly?
Um, yeah, so, and that is something else that certainly if they are gonna be sampling on a cer, a certain date, we can request that we want, you know, our person who's gonna be out there to, to observe things anyway, that we wanna observe them sampling.
That's a great idea.
We can keep an eye on what they're doing as far as sampling goes. And that would be one check on it. And the other is, you know, they're professionals and they should be collecting samples that are, you know, accurate and valid. And, you know, we'll, we can watch it and we can confirm that, you know, they're following the proper chain of custody and other protocols. And, you know, when we get the data, we'll have an idea if it, if it doesn't look, you know, representative or not for various reasons.
Solely that does the testing? Is that correct, Rob?
Or no, their LP, right?
They have their own, they're professional.
They're perfect.
Yeah, they have an L E P also, yes.
Now, I have a question just to, now that testing goes off to a lab that I assume is credentialed and certified through the state. And I mean, I can only speak towards medical labs. I know that's a big requirement, so I would assume it's the same.
Yeah, it's not going to Iran again.
Yeah, well, it's not gonna be like, you know, tests written on with crayons and here you go.
They meet the same standard.
Yeah, so.
It's so, go to Father Panics. So you're gonna find out about your testing protocol on the wells, right?
And how, how frequent?
Yeah. And then we can coordinate with him, Rob's people to either be there to inspect it, like, like Rob was just saying, or to make sure, or one way or the other, that the day they're gonna pull samples out of water samples and make sure that's coming out of the well, it's all the same wells. All the different wells that they have. I don't know how many they have. They don't have that many there, right?
Four?
I think four.
Or six?
We just wanna make sure. We just wanna make sure that if there's a problem that it starts to show contamination, that we need to get into, looking into why it's there.
I agree. I would like that to be actually a condition we write in. I really thank you, Rob, for bringing that up. Because we don't know, we hope that they're honest and we hope they're not taking the water from the Poland Spring bottle and testing it. So I would really like the oversight of your team being there to make sure it's being done to standard.
It's from Maine.
All right, so now, as, as far as the commission, are we leading towards sending this to town council with these changes?
Do we look at, did we look at three yet? I know we were looking at two.
Yeah, discuss three.
All right, let's go to test three.
So you're, you have here that you're gonna go approximately three days a week for a period of two months?
Yes.
For Stafford High, for whatever material they take out of that hole?
Yes.
Okay, and then what happens after that?
They should be done.
Well, they'd be done with the material, right?
Well, here's an issue I have. When they were here in front of us, they said it would take minimum six months to, to sort out Stratford High School. Whatever material was in there. That's why they originally did not want to do Stratford High School first. They wanted to bring in material and then sort at the same time and all that kinda stuff. So if they're, according to them, was gonna take six months and we're only monitoring for two months, there's an issue there. Unless they think they could do it faster.
Need wording in there that covers the entire duration or.
Project.
Say the entire duration.
Of at least Stratford High School, yeah, that, that original. I'm just saying, I mean, maybe they get it done in two months. That'd be great. If they get it done in one month, it's great.
They did come back and say.
It's only part of it. There's other material in there that we don't know about. I know, but they said when they were here, they said they felt it would take six months. Oh, they did. And it would, and it, they said it would hold them, it would hold them up from missing out on materials from other sites and all that kinda stuff. All that kinda stuff.
But then they came, they came back and they said, cause originally they wanted to do it all at the same time, but then they came back and said they were.
Right, but that's.
Pair of Stratford first, right?
I'm just.
I'm wondering if for some reason they realized that.
They could do it faster, sure.
Do it faster, yeah.
We'll change the rate for the entire duration of the sort, okay?
That would be great.
Yep.
And so. I'm gonna ask Rob one more question here. Are you, are you aware that basically they're gonna bring in clean fill? And that it's not, the, the, the fill that comes in is not gonna be processed to make a clean fill. It has to meet the conditions of clean fill from the state of Connecticut.
Actually, that's not true.
Yeah, it is true.
No, it's not, cause their conditions were str- were stricter than.
More strict. Yeah.
Than the state of Connecticut's conditions.
No, no, they, they weren't gonna bring asphalt in. We, we, that's, that was part of, what I'm saying is that. No rebar coming out of country. Yeah, but that's not considered clean fill. If it, it, in the state of Connecticut.
According to them, they said once.
It is, but I get a little research.
They said they weren't gonna put tile.
Tile, you can't, because that's not, certain parts of that is not considered clean fill. What I'm saying, what I'm asking you is that they're not supposed to process the fill on the site to make it clean fill. You know that, right?
Yes.
It has to come in clean.
Yes, they have to, great. The people that are, that are providing the clean fill are gonna have to, you know, describe where it's coming from and they're gonna do their own testing to confirm that it's clean. And then, yes, the site's just gonna receive it and not have to do any, any processing and make it clean.
Oops, I forgot to put that one in there.
Right, and so, all right, that's, yeah, but I'm saying is like, if rebar is sticking out of it or anything like that, it's not considered clean fill.
Correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that, that's what we're looking for and. No asphalt, definitely no asphalt.
Man, you get a truck, a truckload of asphalt, it gets rejected.
No, no, I have that, I have that. But I'm saying is, is that, you know, we just wanna make sure that.
Yeah.
He's, well, we're what, what.
Yeah.
Passes that we want. Okay. Now, I have a question, and, and this is just, whatever. So a truckload of, of asphalt coming in gets rejected. What if there were like some pieces of asphalt?
Yeah, certainly that'll also require a closer look at the other material that, you know, it's within. You know, if there's a lot of, you know, non-natural material, it would certainly make us question the source of it and whether it's really clean or not. You know, so those are the situations where we may have to say, hey, you guys set that aside. We need to look into this further as to what was the documentation? Where did this come from? You know, what, what were you told about this material? So that we can confirm, you know, what it is or may have.
I, I understand when, when, when you're there, but what about when you're not there?
And, you know, certainly you're not gonna be able to be there every minute. And so, you know, if a little bit of that type of material comes in, you know, we can go look at the areas that get filled and, you know, that can be part of our visit is to, you know, take a walk around where they've done their filling and to see if there's anything at the surface at that point.
Right, so my concern is that the fact that you're gonna go every two weeks, a lot of, and I'm not saying that they would do this, but a lot of progress gets made in, in, in a couple of weeks. And I know we're gonna take pictures of their logs and.
All that we want.
So you wouldn't, definitely, you're basically not gonna inspect the fill before it's in the hole that comes in, right?
And certainly not all of it and, you know, not material, right, on its way in, we may not see it. Yeah, and it's gonna depend on how exactly they.
You're talking about six hours a month.
Bruno, can I, can I say something?
Feel free.
This is where we have to rely on the consultant hired by the owner. And it's a catch 22 where actually it is to our benefit if we allow them some kind of sifting, because the material that comes in, it's never gonna be 100% clean.
Oh, I agree with you.
So if we allowed, the consultant should have some credibility that they hire. Who is it that they hire?
Listen, he fills a lot of projects throughout, throughout areas, so I'm sure he's using the same person he always uses. I don't know who that person is.
We met him. Didn't he speak to us like 100 times?
I don't think so.
Their LP wasn't on and talked and.
Yeah, um.
Yeah.
Do they have an LP on 25?
No.
So, all right.
Not a good.
Taking the same week.
It's clean.
Both places.
One doesn't have four million gallons of water.
All right, for task three, um, Nicole?
One question, um, Mr. McCarthy. So in paragraph two, it says you're gonna photograph and document field activities in a field notebook or digital log on a daily basis. But yet we're only going one half day, three days a week. So how are you, how are you guys capturing that daily basis?
So, so I will admit that's probably not fez- freeze properly, that.
Okay.
Any, any day that we are there, we will be, you know, documenting things on that day.
Will you be looking at their, the days you're not there, their logs?
Um, yes, you know, whatever they're maintaining for documentation, we will take a look at that, yes.
And then the LEP will be in regular, you, will be in regular communication with the field personnel and town reps three hours per week. Is that separate from the three half-day visits? Or is that including the three half-day visits?
Yeah, and that's just, you know, basically saying that, you know, the person, our, our staff person's gonna be going there the three half-days a week. And that, you know, I'll be in communication with them, you know, to make sure that I know what's going on. And then if I need to check in with, with you all or town staff, I'll be able to do that.
This says three half-day, the site visits from the LEP will be conducted during sorting. So I read that as you will, you or another LEP will be there three half-days, not, not staff person.
Yeah, I apologize. Um, yes, that is correct, is how we figured it. It's just, you know, three half-days, I guess, throughout that two-month period, yes.
Okay, so it's three half-day visits by you during this, as long as it takes for them to.
Duration.
The duration. And then, uh, other than that, there will be someone else going for one half-day, three days a week during the duration.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, and reality is that depending on that person's schedule and, you know, what they have going on, I may end up there more often. You know, and it's gonna be a little bit of, you know, me having to fill in or them having to, you know, go do another project maybe. So, so I may be there more than what is stated here.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Weston?
I'm good with task three.
Commissioner Mahini?
Good to go.
Commissioner Ambrosi?
Just wanted to get the full document.
I have a, I have a question just for Rick. When, uh, we give this a favorable referral to town council, is it become a public hearing for town council?
All their meetings are, are public.
Part of the public hearing, so people can go.
It's not a hearing. A public hearing is structured with the legal.
That's what I meant. So it's not a public hearing, so they would, okay, got it.
You can observe it.
I didn't know if it was gonna open up for comment from the public.
It's their call to review in the contract that will be reviewed by the first selectman and the town attorney.
No other question. And so, when this, this is all set, before we sign it, our town's attorney's gonna look at it before we move his fore.
All contracts, absolutely.
Bring his back to us if there's a problem?
Yes.
Right?
He looks at the wording.
No, I know, but do we have to have a contract that's in safe until it goes, before it goes to town council?
So you're going through the phase on the language?
Right.
The task. Uh, both wetlands and zoning. First selectman's office reviews it for content, refers it to the town attorney for the language. Advises me to advise the inland wetlands and P and Z that it's ready to go to the town council.
I think Leon's asking, are we gonna see this one more time?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I would like to see this.
Ian, you just made that, yeah.
So you can work within safe to make sure all is put, is put in.
We got the revisions from last night, tonight, put it together. We're meeting next week.
Okay, and we'll, we'll see a new version next week.
See a new version, okay.
Oh, yeah, Rob, how's your schedule? Cause you got, I, I know you got a lot on your plate. We meet next, uh, the 17th.
Um, I can be on, I just, I actually have a, another meeting that I need to. I'm, I'm actually volunteer fireman in my town and I'm the president of the fire department.
St. Patrick's Day?
No, I'm, oh wait, is your meeting on Thursday? I'm sorry. I was thinking it was Wednesday, so I, I'm good.
That's wetlands.
I'm good on Thursday, great.
Yeah, okay.
All right, the language together, the revisions.
Commissioner Panici, go ahead.
Is solely engineering one of the consult, owner's consulting that's job?
Yeah.
So, yeah, and monthly reports, like.
Unless it's.
Like 127 Main Street doesn't get monthly effects.
Should, can he be advised that if he sees anything that not ordinary, that it's contaminated or anything along that line to report it to you?
Yes.
Commissioner Smiglino?
I'm good.
All right, then is there any other additions, attractions, comments? If not, then we'll, Rick will take into account all of these stuff.
I gotta talk about affordable housing.
Thank you, Ryan. On the 17th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Thanks, Rob.
Okay, good night.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we have an update on, update on affordable housing?
Okay. Joe Chapman and I attended a Zoom meeting for the Southbury Affordable Housing Plan and gathered helpful information for our plan. We anticipate a workshop for you in April with a public hearing in May. Then it is to be sent to the town council for final approval before the June deadline. The thing that some towns are struggling with are identifying locations. They can't come to terms because Southbury's got a four-mile stretch of commercial. And right now it's not set up because they don't have two-story structures. It's all built out. They have two other villages, South Britton and Southford, with two-story structure, but it's not enough. Uh, so we are blessed because we have, uh, three projects, Mitch's, the senior housing, and 127. And we have scattered two-story structures that we're going to examine if it's worthy for consideration. Obviously, it's gotta be two units or more, three units or more.
So I have a question. If it goes on the affordable housing plan as an area that we're designating.
As a potential.
Potential.
Affordable.
Uh, then the developer can come in and just say, hey, look, this is on your affordable housing plan, but it's not in your zoning regulations. You're gonna have to change that, right?
Well, we have the overlay zone that we're bringing into fruition to, uh, next Thursday, and that's a tool we can use.
That's funny, I thought we already did that.
No, we're at two.
No, we did the text, Bruno. We get, add it to the map.
We have to get.
Yeah, which we'll never achieve.
And right now we're at what, with everything, two?
1.76.
Okay, so we're almost.
Under two. You're never gonna achieve it in this community.
But you have, we have to have a plan to be moving towards it to.
And that allows you.
It's required.
Allows you protection from the 8-30G.
Well, that and the fact that we don't have sewers. Um, yeah. It's very hard.
What, what, what would our number go up to when, when those three new developments are done?
And we will put that in the reg. You, when we have our workshop.
We gotta go up to like 3%, 4% at that point, no? Cause those are pretty big projects.
I thought the new projects bring us up to that.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's what Bruno's saying.
10%?
No, no, two.
Oh, two.
Bruno's asking to quantify those units. What will it bring us up to based on our total?
No, we're at 2% now.
Just under. We're just under 2%.
So once those three projects are done, we'll be up to like.
Oh, I thought those three projects counted towards.
No, 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 yeah. Those will be new to be added to what we are now.
That'll only bring us to.
Oh, that brings us up to three?
Maybe.
Well, you, that's, you have X number of dwelling units and you need 10%. If you had 10,000, 10%.
We just need 400. 1,000.
1,000, right.
And that's hard to achieve.
It is hard.
Come on, it's, it, it, I, I was on the Blue Ribbon Committee after 1991 and went through, and it said this is an unachievable goal. And that's why it's, it's.
How many, I mean, not that it matters, but how many towns in the state?
All the inner cities.
Doesn't list. So Bridgeport, Waterbury.
Yeah, the Maridans, you know.
They, they, they've achieved.
Yeah. And.
The bigger cities.
But some suburban towns have added a significant amount and you get a waiver from the 8-30G.
Oh, okay.
Different formulas.
We just, we just don't have the space, right?
You know, the sewer.
And the sewer. That's the major one?
And I go on.
Trump, what's Trumbull at?
Oh, they're a lot higher, cause they got hit hard. When I was in North Bramford, we won the first one statewide and then we lost five after it. Trumbull was losing them left and right. But in Trumbull, the industrially zoned land wasn't protected. So remember we had that recession? It was in 1990, 89, 90.
I don't, I don't remember that.
You are blind, right?
They got hammered on all their industrially zoned land and developers came in with affordable housing. And then the state said, we gotta protect our industrially zoned for balanced growth for towns. That was a, that was a, uh, a very unfortunate period in time with that new law that started in 1990. Industrial land was not protected and it should have been.
So Trumbull's, Trumbull's higher.
I, I have the breakdown, I have.
The town is probably.
It's, it's, no, yes, it's very low. Southbury low, Oxford low, Danil.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
So you're gonna plan a workshop for us?
Yeah, we gotta have a workshop. Yeah, we gotta have a workshop before we have the public hearing. Because this commission's gotta be in sync, especially with the locations. Because you're gonna hear at the hearing, please consider my location in suburbia in the middle. I have a five-acre parcel and I feel that's worthy for consideration.
Leon has like 30 acres, we can, uh.
No objection, Leon? No? Okay.
Leon, what?
He didn't object.
His horses.
So let's go, moving on. Do you have more on the affordable housing?
That is it, Mr. Chairman?
All right, then we have, uh, any correspondence?
None.
Commissioner reports, any, I don't have a report.
No, sir.
Any commissioners have reports?
And land use will be next Thursday with Joe Chapman.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, do we have more, um, of kind of the state mandates, uh, on the table coming up that we have to work on?
It's coming up next week. That's a wrap.
All right, yeah, the opting out, we're doing that.
Gotcha.
April 3rd.
Okay.
We gotta repost the legals.
That's what I, that's what I.
And the open space plan, the three opt-outs. I had four, and the fourth one we didn't have to do. So there's three opt-outs and the open space plan.
And that's not till the 3rd, no?
Right, because I have to, we had to repost the legal notices.
Gotcha.
You, you, you couldn't open the meeting at the last one.
Not next week.
Does that include the?
Next week, next week, St. Patrick's Day. Do we have anything on the agenda for next Thursday?
Oh, we have the BICOM, we have the overlay, MDD, the mixed use, I mean, the Main Street Design District.
You're not drinking, dude.
And we have the, uh, luxury affordable, uh, luxury housing, the affordable component. 127 Main Street, the project is on.
Well, he's not even.
Who's being seen it next week, Ryan?
Yeah, it's just gonna take you a while on that.
Uh, Dominic's up to be.
Dominic's up for next week, all right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think all you guys, probably.
Well, you guys are all.
Motion to adjourn, anything?
Motion to adjourn. I can.
32P, yeah.